Limit your comments to three minutes. State your name and your address.
Could you join up the list? Or is that for...
I'm getting a list.
The list is...
Now. Soon.
Yes. Yalit Chen. Would you like to speak? No. Okay. Edmund? Edmund? Go ahead.
My name is Edmund Tamrazee. I'm the owner of the Sunset Fiber Glass Boat Repair. And we have transmission shop. And we have detail shop. And we're selling cars over there. And the reason that we sell car, it was about, almost when the economy went down, fiberglass shop and boat repair totally went down. And we don't have enough income. And I came to Kenmore City and asked them, you know, we not able to pay our payment and rent and pay the, you know, workers. I have two workers that time. And they give me a letter. I asked them to, I want can go to auction and buy some cars from auctions and bring them in the, you know, I know how to fix them and sell them in the property. They give me a letter. And I sent that letter with the dealer application to Olympia and open the dealer license. I got the dealer license. I have it here.
Okay.
Anyhow, after that, we, you know, buying couple cars from auction and bring it down and fix it and sell it. Because if we, you know, only the transmission and, you know, other business we have, they not enough because we don't have enough customers. And we have a mechanic shop behind us was Jim, you know, Englewood Auto. Anyway, and now we see, you know, they changing the zoning and they won't allow us to sell car over there. And we're not selling too many cars. We just selling maybe 10 cars a month. And that 10 cars, we buying, we bring them and it make create job for us to make, you know, enough money to pay for the billing or workers or, you know, other expenses. Anyway, I don't know. Now, the way I understand, city won't approve us anymore to sell car over there. They say it's illegal. And they say you did sell car since illegal. I never, I came get the letter from city, approval letter from city. And they say, okay, show me the letter. I give the letter to Department of Licensing in the, you know, Olympia. I didn't have any letter. I didn't get, they kept the copy. Should the city have the copy? And now we are stuck. And we don't have enough income to pay for the guys or for myself or property expenses, all those kind of stuff. And I don't know what's the decision the city want to makes. I don't understand.
Okay. Stick around. We're talking a little bit about zoning that includes your business.
Okay.
I don't know if your grievance has to do with what we're deciding here on the Planning Commission, but stick around.
Okay.
Maybe we can get some more information.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. I don't have the list, so Bridgette?
Jordan Smith. Did you want to speak?
Oh, no.
Okay. And then Patrick O'Brien?
Patrick O'Brien, 6330 Northeast 181st Street. I'd like to first address that I have a copy of some of the changes to the zoning, giving Rob Carlinsey much more authority over what is deemed a hazard or nuisance. That was an improper process two weeks ago when they were, when we had a meeting, a city council meeting, and we were discussing the baseball fields. The mayor said at the beginning of the meeting was asked if there'd be other time during that city council meeting for public comment. He said, no, there would not be. The, the public comments were heard. They had a meeting regarding the baseball fields. And then they went on to discuss the zoning. And, and based on the mayor's statement, no public comment was given or, and so that was incorrect information. Also, when we formed the city, all businesses were grandfathered in. And the promise was, if you'll recall, no new taxes and, and you're grandfathered into your use. So we've seen companies like Tai Ho try to sell their property. They're, they're maybe considering retirement or maybe they didn't like the incursion into their parking area. I know the city went to great lengths to try to work with them, but nonetheless, they have had their property on the market for sale. And I think it's a real shame if somebody has an existing business, they're paying taxes, and all of a sudden it goes into an arbitrary process where what they're doing can be called a nuisance at the discretion of the city manager or his designee. So I would like to remind everyone that property rights and people buying property are of key importance in this democracy and that anything that would try to usurp people's property rights ought to be looking at, looked at very sternly before those types of codes are put into action. And I would further recommend that we go to a system where we have a citizens review panel where the citizens can actually speak up and say whether or not they think use falls within the category of a nuisance and get it outside of the process. Because from my own experience, if some, a code, a code enforcement agent interprets a code a certain way, it's a long and expensive process for the city. I know the city's lost over $100,000 in the last year on code enforcement and did not recoup that in fines or levies. So it's a great way for the city to be embroiled in a legal battle. And I think it could be easily alleviated with a citizens review panel. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Anybody else?
What is your name? Ying?
Hello. My name is Ying. Last name is Wan. And I'm the owner of 6528 Northeast 153rd Place. And just want to make a comment on like the, the change of land use. I went over the, you are combining the four, five, six, and seven into one clause. And the first line is that prohibited for auto sales. But at the end of the usage changes on the new thing that you want to add is to become accessories to the auto service, as far as I understand, but it's not in the clause. So would that accessory use be added into the clause as well? So when we, when a landlord tried to tell the tenant, prospective tenant, the usage that is clearly stated, if they have a mechanic shop providing service and repair, they are allowed to sell vehicle instead of like, you know, when they look at it, they say auto sale is prohibited. But then they have to like, you know, flip all the pages and doesn't know if, it's not really specific to like, you know, what can be done. So when you tell them that, oh, yeah, you can sell it, then when they call the city, maybe the city just look at, oh, clause four, auto sale is prohibited. Then they answer the question, no, you cannot do it. Then make me like, I'm giving him the wrong information? Is that...
I don't have the answer.
Okay. So I want to, just want to brought this out, like if your accessories allowed it, maybe you can put it into the clause because there's like a footnote four in it. And when you read the four, the whole clause never specify auto sales is accessories if you have a auto sale service. If, make it more clearer, you can like, you know, just say that auto sale is prohibited. Sorry. Auto sales is allow, but limited to certain number of cars. So make it more like smaller accessories to them. So when I say, when someone want to rent my land, they can, I can tell them, yes, but you can only allow a certain limit of vehicles. Then if the book doesn't work out, then he knows that it's like, it's not the main source of the business. So and also like maybe, also like the people that want to, I'm not sure like why it has to be in the conditional permit now because it require $4,000 to get the conditional permit. And most of the people that want to do like auto mechanic shop is a small business. And I think $4,000 is a big overhead initial cost for them to have a license to do the business there. So for anyone that like new to the business and they not sure how the business floating $4,000 is a really hefty price tag they have to consider. And that will limited our land use, the, the type of like, you know, tentative tenant to come in. So I think that we need to consider should we really has to put that conditional on those, like, you know, business because they are already at the permitted level. So that's my concern about changing to that perspective. But other than that, just want to make additional stuff clear so we know what to tell our tenant. Thank you.
Mr. Ying. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda, and I'm going to invite the commission to ask staff some of the follow-up to the questions that both of you raised who are doing auto businesses in the, in the zones that we are considering right now for rezoning. The next item on the agenda is approval of the May 2nd, 2017 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I did have some.
Oh, okay. Do I hear a motion to amend the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
On the second page, there were a couple of sentences that said there were no objections and the motion passed, then like 4-1 or whatever. I think we probably don't, I think it's inaccurate to say there were no objections. I think you just said 4-1.
Okay. Do I hear a second for that motion?
I'll say.
Okay. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, vote. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Minutes are amended. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? I have to abstain because I missed the meeting. So the motion carries. The minutes are approved as amended. Next item on the agenda is neighborhood business zone review continued. I invite the city staff to the presentation table.
So Chen, how would you like to proceed with responding to comments?
Yeah. I want to invite anybody on the commission if they have questions that arise from the citizen comment, particularly the business owners and the neighborhood business zone that we're looking at. If they had questions for the staff, I invite you to raise them. And if not, I invite the staff, if they can, to respond to those comments. Commissioner McDonnell?
Yeah. I was curious on the sales, is it connected to the auto repair business? Because sometimes people come, I don't know, to car or more and include that the shop and then the shop's going to sell. I mean, is that the kind of sales that we're looking at? And is it not an auto sale place where you go to the wholesaler and get 10 cars and, you know, just an accessory business because you're fixing cars and you get a car and you fix up and you can sell? Is that the distinction?
Yes.
Okay. And is the proposal to prevent that happening right now?
No. I'll give a little bit of background. So automotive sales is a prohibited use in the existing neighborhood business zone and in the proposed neighborhood business zone. However, accessory sales of automobiles associated with the business, just as you were talking about, are permitted as an accessory use. And I believe that that has been the case with at least one of the businesses that was speaking this evening. My understanding is that what has happened is that, in fact, the business has moved beyond that. So that now auto sales is being conducted there not just as an accessory, but as a standalone business, which is illegal. The city development services department has said that it is illegal, but they are withholding any enforcement action until after the neighborhood business zone process goes through, knowing that the owners of the businesses would come in and ask that automotive sales be a permitted use rather than a prohibited use. We spoke to two of the folks who presented here tonight at the open house last week, and their comments are in the list of, of comments that you have in front of you that I'll go through this evening. One of the suggestions was could accessory use be defined more carefully? One suggestion was, well, maybe you want to say an accessory use really is the sale of five cars that's permitted or put a number on it of some sort. What I heard tonight was also that there is a footnote that speaks to the fact that automotive sales is prohibited. And maybe that could be clarified by saying automotive sales are prohibited except as an accessory use or something like that. So that's the issue in front of us for, I think, two of the people who spoke. I'm not certain what Mr. O'Brien is referring to. I, I truly don't know. It sounded like there was maybe a nuisance ordinance, something that was in front of the city council, and I, I don't know what that is.
Right. And he was referring to a parcel of property that's outside the zone that we're considering? Is that right? Tai Ho Restaurant?
Right.
It's on 522. We're looking at a Juanita Drive.
Right.
And, okay. Anything else? Questions? All right. Go ahead, Commissioner.
What's the concern of having auto sales?
I, I think the idea was that allowing automotive sales as a new use in what's supposed to be a small neighborhood retail service area was not appropriate. It's prohibited currently, so it's not a change to the existing zoning. So we just retained that, given the nature of the areas. Automotive service has been supported both by the Planning Commission and by a number of people that we talked to at the open house. So automotive service is, seems to be a use that folks are very interested in retaining, although the idea was not to make it an outright permitted use because then you might get an additional number of automotive service businesses. And that was an attempt to keep the existing businesses, but allow other retail office, personal service uses to go into that, those small areas.
So auto service, is it a conditionally permitted use?
The proposal, currently automotive service is an outright permitted use.
Okay.
The proposal is that automotive service be a conditional use, which would mean that existing businesses could continue to operate. They would be non-conforming as to process.
Right.
Not as to use. But if they wanted to expand, they would have to get a conditional use permit. New automotive services businesses would have to get a conditional use permit, no matter their size if they were on a different parcel.
So I got a question on that. So what if the owner of ABC Car Repair sells his business to a new owner?
Correct. If he sold his business to a new owner, if it was still automotive service and he were not expanding the facility, there would be no change, no impact.
And one other question. What's the concern of having auto sales? Is there, you know, the, what's the overall problem with that, that you limit it?
Well, again, the idea was that car lots were not a preferred use in small business areas that are designed to serve the immediate neighborhood. That, that's the idea, that you would not want a car dealership, for example, to move into one of those underutilized lots in that area, that that maybe is not the best use of a district that's designed to serve the immediate neighborhood.
Okay. And just to follow up on that, so, so what do you think about having a number of cars being sold to define the accessory use of auto sales to the car repair place?
Yeah. I, I don't have a problem with that. It could be helpful. It, it could also be, once you set something down in the code, then there's no room for interpretation. So if someone, if you said, okay, it's five cars, and they said, well, I need six cars, you have to say, sorry, that doesn't work. I can't, it can't be an accessory use if you're selling six cars, if the limit is five cars. So that's the downside of setting a limit. I think it is probably a clarification for people so that they would know how many cars they could sell as an accessory.
What about having a burden of proof that if you're more than five cars, then you got to show us that it's an accessory use rather than an outright auto sale?
Well, I would anticipate we would do that anyway. I, I don't think we would say you can sell five cars. I would think we would say auto sales may be permitted as an accessory use for up to five vehicles, something like that. So you still would be having to prove that it was an accessory use and not an outright permitted use.
Well, I, I mean, I would think we'd put a number and then, and then if you go over there, then you'd have to show that it's not an accessory use.
Yeah. That's a different approach that would work if that's what you wanted to do.
Leave them, the business owner, having to prove it every time.
Mm-hmm.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Vice Chair?
Yeah. Are there other, I suppose, numerical restrictions on accessory uses? I mean, would this be setting any sort of precedent for other zones, other uses with, with accessory use?
It, it would be different. I don't know of another accessory use that's limited by anything other than the definition of accessory use.
What is the definition?
It's, well, let me grab the code and I'll read it to you. How about that? Okay. So accessory use was just redefined a few years ago with the regional business zoning project.
For regional or neighborhood?
We're talking...
Go ahead.
We're talking about the neighborhood business zone. An accessory use is a use typically subordinate in size to the principal use that would not contribute significantly to traffic generation, noise, or nuisance, and that supports the primary use operation without displacing it. An accessory use may appear as an otherwise permitted, conditional, or prohibited use in the use allowances for a given zone. Accessory uses are typically located upon the same lot occupied by a principal use. Examples of accessory uses include equipment rental, for example, bikes or skis at a retail bike and ski shop, or a secure facility required at an airport, and boat parking at a marina.
So what would be the process if we did have a numerical limit? If someone wanted to exceed that, could they apply for what, some kind of exception or exemption? How, how would that work?
There's, there's no provision other, I mean, the only exception to a zoning code standard, if you put a numerical limit on it, I suppose would be a variance, which would be a difficult test.
I'm sorry, huh?
A variance?
A variance.
That would be a difficult test.
Other questions? No? Okay. The floor is yours.
Well, I think the next item, I think Laurie was planning to go through some of the changes as well as kind of going over the open house from last week, the comments that were received.
Okay.
Please.
All right. So at each of your places, I put a sheet that was a compilation of comments from the open house. These comments were gathered by Samantha Loyak in Development Services, who was the other person manning the station. She manned the south station, south neighborhood business zone station at the open house. And so we tried to compile our comments. It's very possible that we missed conversations. Commissioner Orangeall and Commissioner Baker were present, and they may have their own thoughts about what should be added on to this. But I thought I'd just briefly go down the list and perhaps answer some questions related to it, but also let you know what some of the issues that were raised were. So we had, we had a good turnout. We had about 25 attendees at the open house. And prior to the open house, I had received about 22 phone calls and emails, people asking for information or just wondering kind of what we were doing with the open house. So for the Northeast 153rd Place and Juanita Drive, that's what we're calling the south neighborhood business zone. Sam notes that a few people were confused about what was going on, so we would have described what the zoning changes were. There was a general dislike for outdoor storage and warehousing, with the exception of one business owner. That business owner of the butcher shop, I think Commissioner Mulcair had raised a question about that. And that business, which takes up the big vacant lot that was formerly a gas station and that has a number of refrigeration containers on it, and the neighboring retail shop, that is another use that Development Services has found to be illegal. It has kind of switched, and they have talked with the owner of that property about that. It has switched from a retail use with a, an accessory wholesaling warehousing kind of a use to a wholesaling use with the retail component as an accessory use. So now the fundamental business is a wholesaling business, and that is not permitted currently and not permitted in the proposed zoning. So anyway, the, then the next bullet point is about the auto service business. And this was the gentleman that spoke this evening. Next bullet point, most did not support automotive sales, with the exception of the existing auto service shops doing it as the accessory use. Parking and congestion was mentioned. That's not really related to the zoning update here. And people agreed with the new prohibited uses. We, the commission in the preliminary recommendation was suggesting that a number of larger regional kind of uses be prohibited, given again, the nature of this area as serving the surrounding community. Need for design standards, especially screening, was mentioned. One person asked about whether a new plumbing business would permit, be permitted. A plumbing business can be two things. It can be an office where the business is being conducted. There may be an associated showroom. If, on the other hand, it was like a dispatch business where there were lots of trucks and there were lots of pipes, outdoor storage kind of things, that's a construction and trade use, and that would be prohibited. But I, I think in this case, it was primarily an office. It was a plumbing business office. One person wanted to be sure the coffee stand down in that area would be allowed to remain, and that's an eating and drinking place, a permitted use. And one person left a comment saying that wholesaling and parking of semi-trailers should not be allowed. And then the owner of the butcher shop left several comments feeling that wholesaling should be a permitted use, that height, which we'll be talking about tonight, the development standards, height should be increased to five stories. The 50/50 mix of mixed-use zoning should be eliminated, although mixed use should be allowed to continue. should be eliminated, although mixed use should be allowed to continue, felt the bed and breakfast rules should be relaxed, a hotel should be a permitted use, and the setback between residential uses and the neighborhood business zone should be reduced to zero. At the, in the north, currently, north NB area, which we're calling the community business Juanita subarea, one person asked if a temporary employment organization would be permitted. That was a difficult question to answer because I wasn't certain exactly what that was. At one point, it sounded like it was more of a temporary use, when this person was describing it to me, maybe something that you would see at Home Depot where there are people standing outside looking for work, not a formal, official land use. In another case, it sounded like, well, maybe it's a social assistance kind of a use where there's an office and people are receiving phone calls and then sending folks out for work. That would be healthcare and social assistance, that would be a permitted use. And then a few people, two or three, were concerned about allowing a drinking place. It's possible that there were three or four. I can't quite remember how many people mentioned that. But currently, in the neighborhood business zone, a drinking place is a prohibited use, while an eating and drinking place would be a permitted use in the proposal. And then, again, auto, the auto owners of Sunset Transmission and Auto Service Business were concerned about the auto, associated auto sales. And the owner of the veterinary clinic had called to ask about size limits. If you recall, there were size limits on retail, personal service, some of those uses, but the veterinary clinic did not have that same size limitation.
Right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? No?
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was one thing that came up. It was sort of mentioned, I'm sorry, by the butcher shop. There were a couple of questions about height, specifically, my notes show about town home heights, which was 45 feet, I believe, at the max.
Correct.
35 at the base, right? So that came up too, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Question on the butcher shop. Are you saying that they can't do their business that they've been doing for the last, I don't know, 15 years?
It's an illegal use. And, again, it has, the nature of it has changed, so that formerly, it was a retail place that sold, my understanding, that sold sandwiches and meat and that kind of thing. And then, as an accessory, they may have had some other types of business activities going on. But the other type of business activities, the wholesaling, has dramatically increased. And so now, it is the predominant use. So those, again, I haven't been out to the site or talked much to the property owner. Development Services did that, and my understanding is that those containers are associated with the wholesaling part of the business, not the retail.
Yeah, I think they've always done the wholesaling, to my knowledge, from the very start.
I can tell you what I can tell you, which is that Development Services researched it and said that the wholesaling had now become the predominant use. They may have done it.
You know, and I could be wrong on this. I always thought, in fact, they started as a wholesale place, if I'm not mistaken, but I could be mistaken. But the problem with that property is, somebody's got a, you know, it's got the cleanup that needs to be on it.
Right.
And so unless you make it, I mean, an owner of the property might be prohibited to keep them from doing, you know, having a money-making business. So I'm concerned about that.
It's, again, that's something the Planning Commission can discuss. Staff continues to recommend against allowing wholesaling in a neighborhood that's focused on serving regional neighborhood needs. And we did hear several complaints about the containers on that property.
Okay. Anything else? All right. The floor is the staff's.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll turn our attention to tonight's topic, which is development standards for the neighborhood business zone. And I thought we could start with the new CB Juanita subarea. So this is the north area around northeast 170th Street and Juanita. And that area is one, again, that we modeled on the community business zone at northeast 181st Street. And so the staff recommendation is that we use the existing community business standards rather than the neighborhood business standards, except for maximum height. And that would mean a significant increase in allowable density, in allowable residential density. So currently, the base density in that area in the neighborhood business zone is eight dwelling units per acre. To match the community business zone, it would move to 36 dwelling units per acre. And there would be some reduced setbacks. And the reason staff is recommending it is that we felt that it supported the Planning Commission's interest in that as a more walkable area close to downtown, similar to the northeast 181st Street business district. As for maximum height, the current allowable height in the neighborhood business zone is 35 feet, and then you can go up to 45 feet for mixed use. The 35-foot maximum height in the community business zone was established relative to the views to Lake Washington, and not a concern on Juanita Drive. So staff continued to believe that allowing height up to 45 feet for mixed use was appropriate. And then, after we're through talking about some of these development standards, then Arthur Sullivan with Arch is going to give a brief presentation on the impacts of thinking about increased density and how that relates to possible affordable housing issues.
All right.
So any questions about?
Questions about the staff proposal? Vice Chair?
Yeah, the 45-foot limit. Can you refresh my memory? Are there any provisions for going above that with, like, a development agreement or some other mechanism? I mean, I know that's the maximum here, but as I recall, there are ways, in some circumstances, to go higher.
Okay. So the current neighborhood business zone, as I mentioned, is 35 feet, and then you can go to 45 feet with a, for a mixed-use project, but, or for townhomes. But for this zone currently, if you have increased setbacks, for one additional foot of setback, you can go up one additional foot of height, and you can go up to 75 feet, which seemed extreme, given the two locations. Probably would never get that high because the parcels are small, and unless you...
The building would look like a totem pole.
Yeah. Unless you combined parcels, you might not, you know, you probably don't have enough room with setbacks to get that much higher. But staff thought that it was important to eliminate that allowance to go up to the 75 feet with setbacks. So it'd just be 35 feet and then 45 feet.
But could they go above 45 if they did some other, there's no other way they could go above 45?
No, except through a development agreement.
Which would be unlikely on a parcel like that?
I would assume it would be unlikely, but anything is possible. If you are offering a public benefit, the city council would weigh whether the public benefit somehow was enough to justify an increase in height.
Anything else? No? No other questions?
Okay.
So are we, are we just getting briefed on this, or should we take votes on each proposal?
So I think we were hoping for a vote, but I think the easiest thing would be for me to go through everything and then sort of have an indication, because there's some other things that don't fit neatly into the charts, and I kind of wanted to talk about all the development standards and hear your reactions to those, and then if you're comfortable, then you could take a vote. And, again, the vote is to establish your preliminary recommendation, and we're shooting for a July 18th public hearing. So the other thing you would want to do is to talk about the uses, whether the information that you have heard brought back to you from the open house is something that would cause you to revisit or reconsider your preliminary recommendation.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right. So for the south neighborhood business area, that would be a continuation, but a new neighborhood business zone. Again, we're proposing a density increase because those, these areas are surrounded by multifamily zoning, and we thought it would be more appropriate to have the densities be consistent. So we're recommending that the allowable density be increased from eight dwelling units per acre to, up to 24 dwelling units per acre. And then, as in the north neighborhood business area, we're going to talk a little bit about the affordable housing implications of that when I'm finished here. Then, again, we'd be eliminating that opportunity to go up to 75 feet in height with additional setbacks, and also are recommending that certain FAR floor area ratio restrictions that affect how much square, how much square footage you can put on a parcel be eliminated, and that only the setbacks and the height control the building form.
Questions? No? All right.
Okay. Some of the other amendments that we're recommending, design standards, like the community business zone, staff is recommending that those same pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-oriented design standards be applied in that area near northeast 170th Street. Again, we're trying to be consistent with the community business zoning. We're not making that same proposal for the area down at northeast 153rd Street, which is not necessarily a pedestrian-oriented area in the same way. I mean, certainly, the sidewalks and that kind of thing are important, but maybe not the same degree of design standards that you would have closer to downtown. For wireless communication facilities, we're making a distinction now between the community business zone in an area where there are view issues versus a community business subarea, Juanita subarea zone, where there aren't view issues. So we would be amending the charts for the process for wireless communication facilities. Billboards, there is an exist...
I'll drop you on that one.
Yeah, sure.
What about the wireless thing? You're saying that...
So when the wireless facility amendments were done last year, certain processes were put in place, a more stringent review process, and higher, or, I'm sorry, lower height limits for wireless communication facilities in certain zones that were considered view zones. And community business was one of those because it was on northeast 181st with views to the lake, and folks above them had views to the lake. At the Juanita subarea, there are not the same view issues. So in that case, we're recommending that the wireless facility standards match the same standards as are in commercial areas that don't have view implications. Did that help?
Yep.
Okay. So billboards. There is a billboard in the neighborhood business area, and currently, billboards can only be located on sites with certain zonings, including community business. So they're prohibited in the neighborhood business zone, and staff believes that that prohibition should be carried forward. It's been city policy to try to eliminate billboards throughout the city. So allowing them in a new community business subarea would not fit with that policy of eventual elimination.
Is that for aesthetics?
Correct.
Okay.
And mixed-use requirements, there are certain percentages, allowable percentages of residential uses in mixed use in the neighborhood business zone. That restriction is kept at 50% can be residential, but 75% is allowed in the community business zone. And so staff is recommending that a more liberal 75% be applied in the neighborhood business zone to provide more design flexibility. And then, the last set of amendments, really our miscellaneous amendments, just to clarify that we're now potentially adopting a subarea of the community business zone, and you have to go through the code and make sure that you're consistently referring to the different areas if you have a new subarea. So those are the miscellaneous amendments that were included in your attachment eight.
Questions? No? Okay.
Okay. So if there aren't any questions, then what I would suggest, I think Arthur is here. So Arthur's goal this evening is, he's planning to give a 10, 15-minute presentation on affordable housing issues and options that we should be considering whenever we have an increase in density. And so, again, he's going to have a 10- or 15-minute presentation. I hope we can hold questions and just let him get through the material. And then, after that, the goal is to determine whether the Planning Commission has an interest in pursuing an affordability strategy in the neighborhood business zone, and we'll go from there.
All right. I'd like to propose either a five-minute recess, maybe a three-minute recess before Arthur steps up, because I have to make a, I have to recess myself, or the vice chair can say, do we have a motion? Do we have discussion in response to the presentation?
Well, I'd like to have a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, we've had some public comment, and, for instance, talk about the butcher shop and everything. We're not doing anything that would affect that situation, or is that, can you enlighten me on that?
So the way it would impact that situation is that currently, wholesaling is a prohibited use in that zone. It's an illegal use. And so it's an illegal prohibited use. And that is what the proposal, the preliminary proposal that the Planning Commission adopted would make it stay. It would continue to be an illegal prohibited use. If the Planning Commission decided that wholesaling should be either a permitted or a conditionally permitted use in the zone, then it would, it would no longer be an illegal prohibited use. So that's where we are.
Okay, so we wouldn't be changing anything, is what you're saying?
If you don't change anything, it will be, continue to be an illegal use and will be enforced against.
Yeah. And they're not grandfathered in because they, I mean...
No.
They've got, they changed their use.
An illegal use cannot be grandfathered.
Yeah. So they were apparently a compliant, conforming use while they were primarily retail, but they switched to more wholesale, and that violated the existing land uses.
Yeah, I guess I don't have the whole history on that. I mean, I always thought they were doing wholesale, but...
And they may have been, but it was a small, it was an accessory, it was that subordinate, that description of accessory use that I explained.
My only concern is that, you know, it's a thriving company, it seems to be, and to get somebody to fill that void, if it did go out of business, you know, that's my concern, and having the cleanup cost to do something else there, you know, I don't know, without a cleanup, you know, what's going to happen to it. That's my only concern.
Yeah. So I think what you're getting at is, you may want to raise a motion and propose that we allow the wholesale use for that area, and then see if it's seconded and have discussion and that kind of thing.
Well, I mean, should we investigate it? Because I really don't, I don't know for sure what's going on there.
Right.
And I don't want to put somebody out of business.
But I think there's a difference between what we're doing, which is making recommendations to the city council, and enforcement of the existing code. And right now, it looks like there's a violation of the existing code, and I think you're wrestling with that, which really isn't our job.
Right.
It's the staff's job.
Right.
If you want to change the code, then you should propose something.
Okay.
But you're getting back to, okay, what was the historical use, and is it really, was it more of a wholesale use? Is it now more of a wholesale use? Those are factual issues and historical issues, but that's not really what we're wrestling with here.
Right.
We're wrestling with the future.
Right. Well, I mean, I would, you know, I would... Well, I mean, I would, you know, I, I would just suggest that maybe we have the owner come in and talk to us and tell us what, you know-
Yeah, but that, again, is a staff issue to enforce the existing code.
No, I get, I get that, I get that, but I'm-
So, I'm not sure how it would help us make a prospective recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, if we were going to change that, I mean, could we do it in the future rather than now? I mean, what we do now is we're not changing anything.
Well, that's the staff recommendation.
Yeah.
So, I think what you may be getting at is you want to make that change or you want to talk, you want the commission to consider some other accommodation for this business.
Well, I'd, I'd like to investigate it and I don't know how we do that.
Right. Well, we would do it with a majority of the commission saying, yeah, let's do that and giving that instruction to staff. So, that would be the, I think, the way to start would be for you to raise a motion, see if we get a majority. I think it would require all four because for, for it to pass of the people here tonight, because we have a seven-person commission.
I'd make a motion to investigate the situation so that we can figure out if it needs to be changed or grandfathered or what have you, because I don't know the economics on that property and given, and I don't know what it takes to do a cleanup and, and, you know, the worst thing that could happen is we can have a ghost, you know, shop there.
So, yeah. Okay, motion on the floor. Do I hear a second for the motion?
Could you repeat what the motion is?
I can paraphrase it, but I'll let you do that if you like.
Well, a motion to investigate the situation up there at the butcher shop to see whether it, it, it should be grandfathered in for the business that they have.
Well, that's the issue. It's illegal now. I can't grandfather it.
It currently is.
I have to change the land use to prevent. At least that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, I think so too. So, grandfathered isn't the question.
Okay.
I think the motion would either be, I think what you're getting is you want to investigate this and the question is why? Is it for purposes of informing our future zoning recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's really all that we're, that is the scope of our, our order from the City Council. Okay, so we have a motion to investigate the warehousing business for purposes of informing our recommendation on future uses. Do I hear a second for that motion? Going once?
Just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, if we were to second it and if we were to pass-
Yeah.
Wouldn't that basically be delaying our ability to deal with that aspect? No, it would still be in limbo.
Well, it seems to me, yeah, the investigation would be a step predicate to making a further decision on it. So, that would delay the process somewhat. Question is, is that something we want to do? Is it worth the delay to get that information?
Assuming the best case that we got that information and it still reflects in the legal, unpermitted use, sort of then comes to the question, would we be willing to change the zoning to make it legal?
Right. Motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Going once, you want some time? You could second it just for purposes of putting it to discussion, because that would be the next step.
I'll second it then.
Okay. So, we have a second, the motion is on the floor. Do I hear discussion, questions? Scott, do you want to add to what you've already said?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, I think we could go forward on all these other changes that they want and, and come back to that. I'm just, I just hate to see a business go out, you know, a business and, and then have it be, you know, just an empty lot. And I don't know the dynamics there and, and so, that's my only concern. I mean, I don't have a problem with the way it's being run right now. It doesn't, I don't look over there and, oh my God, and say, oh my God. So, so, that's kind of why my position is I, I don't want to, you know, have somebody go out of business and then end up with nothing there. I mean, it's a, it's an amenity to have that, that retail shop there.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's a standalone without the warehousing.
Okay. Any other response to that, further discussion? You know, my sense is there's, there's this policy behind the neighborhood business zone and that seems to be, I tend to agree with the staff recommendation. This is suited for local businesses serving the local area, more retail in nature, less industrial, less prime, you know, there were tiers that we used to describe the kind of businesses that operated in various places. Some were very natural resources oriented, some were at the, you know, the primary levels of the economy, others are at the more refined levels of the economy like retail businesses and carefully designed storefronts and that kind of thing. This strikes me, this area, as more of a, as a retail area, as a small business area. And that does seem to be the policy behind the neighborhood business, to bring warehousing into that. It's a more industrial kind of a use. I just don't think it fits on that corner across from the school. You've got a restaurant that might be starting up, looking for a permit on the other side of the street. You've got, we're looking at increasing density and, and I think mixed use, up to 75% residential. That seems to fit more into the character of that area. So, regardless of the investigation, I would still be inclined against changing the zoning to allow for warehousing. You know, and I agree with, nobody wants to see a thriving business leave.
Yeah, you know what?
The question is whether they're complying with the city's broader-
I know, I know. A friend of mine who's got a business in Kirkland and he's, he's got a tea shop.
Yeah.
And I said, how do you make it as a tea shop? He says, I don't. I got a wholesale business behind this. And that's where a lot of, you know, everybody's on the internet now and the brick and mortar is not the, the future. And so, this could be, you know, that's probably why he's gone that way because he's, that's where you're competing now is, is in that form and, and to have a standalone retail place is, you know, you're not making enough money to get by. So, that's, I mean, that's a-
That's a challenge. That's a big question, a big, broad economic question, policy question. But for purposes of zoning, I see some benefits to the landowners of this property. The increase in residential density is a huge windfall.
True.
They could turn around then and sell it for a lot more money because it's a very desirable use of the property. So, this isn't all punishment for them. They're probably worth more after the staff's proposal than before the staff's proposal. So, I don't see this as punitive.
Yeah, to the landowner, but not to the business owner.
Not to the business, that's true. But it's never zoned for that purpose to begin with. So, once they stepped outside of it, they kind of knew what the risks were. That's my, that's why I'm inclined to go the other way, but I respect where you're coming from.
Yeah, I get it.
Anybody else want to comment?
Well, the comment I'd like to make is that it's out of the scope of the Planning Commission's commission to the council to try to wrestle with that specific issue when we're trying to basically take an almost 20-year-old neighborhood business zone into the future. And some of the things that have changed is the dramatic growth in Puget Sound. And so, as a city accommodating growth is one way that the Planning Commission can move this topic forward with recommendations that the council could actually do something with. There will be fallout. Anytime you change things and it affects tenants, landowners and neighbors, it's not like we're going to avoid the fallout. I think the bet, what we're really trying to decide is can we accept these recommendations from the plan, from the staff as they develop the city? Can we agree to those recommendations for the benefit of the cities moving forward? It's going to impact people. I don't know that stopping and doing research on it will change any of the outcomes, just because of the growth factor that is in our region. If you drive down Aurora from Everett to downtown Seattle, what you'll see is density, 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 or, or changes in how businesses operate. And what we know is Amazon's going to take over the world. If you go down Aurora, you'll see an Amazon delivery station about every three miles going in this week. So, I don't know if that really helps our discussion, but I tend to agree with Doug that even if we did stop and investigate, our conclusion would probably be the same.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to start and slow us up, but-
Yeah.
Any other discussion, vice chair?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with Doug and Carol, this is really beyond our scope and I'm like Doug, I'm not inclined to think of warehousing as something we want to, you know, allow as a new use in, in this zone. So, that's my perspective too.
All right. Any other discussion? Dennis? No? Yes? Maybe? All right. All right. If that exhausts the discussion, then we'll put the motion to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, thank you. All opposed to the motion, please raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Nay. The nays have it, the motion does not succeed. So, that settles that. Any other discussion on, go ahead, vice chair.
Well, yeah, I am interested in the, in the idea as, as brought up by our comment speaker about limiting the number of autos allowed as an accessory use, but I'm not exactly sure what the right number is or what the implications are of that. So, I guess I'm wondering, what would the process be for looking into that? Do we need to make a motion tonight? Because I'm not exactly sure, five or six sounds reasonable, but I don't know that we have enough information to know that that's the right number. So-
I'm not sure where to find that information either. I think it's possible that I might be able to find some background research if the Planning Commission is interested, but again, I, I'm just not quite sure how to do that. It's, it's more of a scope. I guess when I'm thinking of it, I'm thinking of the businesses that are there and what's a reasonable number of cars. You would assume that somebody would go in and they'd have their car repaired and they wanted to leave their car and, and so, in the discussion, when the business owner mentioned, at one point, someone mentioned five. I'm not sure it was the business owner. Tonight, another business owner mentioned 10. 10 seems a little high to me. So, I suppose the best we could do would be to see if we can find any information and if not, it's just going to be a sort of an educated guess, looking at the size of those businesses and what would seem reasonable on the ground.
What do other people think? I mean, I'm, that's my, I'd like to look into it.
Thanks for bringing it up and I, you know, I'm trying to get a little bit up to speed on this whole thing and I just want to be clear that the commission has already discussed and proposed limits on auto sales as a primary use.
Correct.
The only auto sales would be an accessory use to an allowable use such as auto repair or auto service.
Right. And, and the only difference between the current standard and the proposed standard is that it becomes a conditional use. So, the banning of automotive sales is not a new standard. That is the current existing standard.
When you say it becomes a conditional use, does auto service become a conditional use instead of a permitted use?
Auto service becomes a conditional use.
And all the existing auto service is grandfathered, so you don't have to satisfy the conditions for continuing that use?
Correct.
Okay.
So, part of the business owner's presentation is that when there's an economic downturn, they turn to more auto sales to meet their expenses. That would be a simple way of describing it. But, you know, how does the city do that for any other business in the city? If there's an economic downturn, how do they accommodate other businesses that have to figure out what to do next?
Right. Good point. And so, you know, we make these zoning proposals for the long term and there are business cycles. And there will be, you know, the thriving periods as we have now and there's going to be the down periods inevitably. You can't change zoning just to accommodate those because they're unpredictable and they're short-lived and that would, there would be no vision, there would be no long-term plan. It would be patchwork, constant patchwork.
Plus, you'd also have the other thing that happens and that is that maybe the business owners are comfortable selling vehicles and it exceeds the permitted original use of the business. So, rather than be an automotive service, it becomes sales, kind of like what we're talking about with the retail, you know, meat business really was to sell meat and sandwiches and things to the public. But what's happened is their business is more lucrative on the wholesale side. So, would this be a similar situation? We have no idea. But as a zoning policy, that's not really what is going to motivate our zoning is those economic cycles.
So, the next question then is, I think what this boils down to, do we have enough clarity with accessory use, particularly on auto sales? And that's the, that's, that would be the point of putting a number on presumptively accessory use up to a certain point and thereafter, as Scott proposed, there would be a burden of, the burden would shift on the, on the user of the property to show that it was in fact accessory above that number. Is that right?
Well, there are two ways to approach it. One is that you have a footnote that says automotive sales are prohibited with the exception of accessory automotive sales and up to five vehicles for sale are permitted, period.
Okay.
Then, if you want to go over five, there's no more discussion. You are prohibited from going over five. I think what Scott was talking about was that the footnote would say accessory, we're going to assume that up to five is an accessory use, but if you want to try to justify for us that 15 is an accessory use, you can make, make that case. I think that is perhaps even more difficult to work with than just leaving it at five. You know, the way it is now, it's, there's no number. So, now, the, the question is, you show us that you are doing just accessory auto sales related to your service business and if you are doing that, we will approve it, end of discussion. If you have just the flat number, you show us that you're only selling five, easy, we approve it, no number. If you say, you can do five, but then we're going to have a discussion if, that you want to do 15 and somehow that's an accessory use, it feels like we're kind of opening the door wider than I would have anticipated.
Ms. Olson?
The question that I have is, does it make sense or does it make it more complicated to create a number of like one per 300 square feet of service area?
I think you would probably get to the same place unless your business were big enough and, you know, we'd have to look at the numbers. I don't know what the size of those shops are currently, but if for some reason you got to the place where by doing it by square footage, you were suddenly looking at 20 automobiles, I would not view that as an accessory use.
My problem is that we're kind of randomly picking out numbers and-
Right.
It depends on the scope of the business, the size of the business, as you suggested, but also how many vehicles do they have? What's the default rate on paying for services so that they end up using the car as collateral to collect on their fees in the road?
It's very complicated.
We know none of that.
Right. And I don't know exactly how you would get it.
I'm not inclined to just pick numbers out of the air and say, well, that's not a lot, that kind of thing. So, at the very least, I think we'd have to get more information before we focused on a number. The notion of a number is attractive because of the clarity and I think one of the public speakers was an owner of a business that wanted more clarity in this, but there's two sides to that. It's, it's, there's no wiggle room and the business may justify having to sell more than X number of cars as an accessory use. So, the clarity is a bit punitive in that sense.
Right. I think maybe-
I just don't think we're ready for that unless the majority wants, or the four of us want to get more information.
I think the one other point I might add is that we typically don't go out and review sales, things that are happening at automotive service dealers. In this particular case, the number had gotten large enough that we were seeing an increased volume of cars. There was a sign that says we buy cars, which is immediately a red flag. So, I know discretion is uncomfortable, but if somebody- So I know discretion is uncomfortable, but if somebody is selling two or three cars at an auto service business, the city is not going to go say, okay, go justify this as an accessory use. But at the point that it becomes seemingly impactful, then either a neighbor is going to complain, or the city will say, why are these cars in our right-of-way? And I think you see where I'm going with this, that you can put a number on it, and that provides more clarity, but it also gets rid of the discretion that might make it easier for someone to operate their business.
Baker?
So the other thing that you have to think about is, as a city, do we come under any kind of liability if we allow somebody to do an illegal business? That also gets tied up with state licensing and all that kind of stuff. I mean, does it seem like we're creating the rules for our little city that the state rules wouldn't allow us to do? Or is it just zoning issues?
It's just zoning. This, in fact, in this particular case, the State Department of Licensing has said we're not going to issue a license because it doesn't comply with city zoning. It's kind of like
Okay.
the marijuana rules, where the state may issue a license, but that doesn't mean the person doesn't have to comply with the city zoning rules.
Okay.
All right, is there anybody who is interested in raising a motion on this? Or should we have more discussion?
Well, so who currently decides the allowability of an accessory use if it comes to a question before the city?
It would be a Development Services Director decision.
Okay, not the city manager or hearing examiner or something like that?
So one thing that might be useful, because I think there's some confusion over this sometimes. The city manager is a defined term in the zoning code, and in a lot of places, it says the city manager makes the decision. But the city manager definition, when italicized, is the city manager or his or her designee. And in 99% of cases, the designee is the Development Services Director. So though it may say city manager, it's the Development Services Director in practice. Would not be a hearing examiner decision.
So we're looking for clarity, right? I mean, we're, but we're balancing clarity and discretion. What, how else besides a number could we perhaps get some more clarity without losing discretion? Are there any other avenues? I just think, I'm just exploring whether there's any other opportunities.
Laurie had read the definition of an accessory use, right?
Right, and it's relatively clear. No, I think I get it.
I didn't really, the accessory definition went right over my head because it just.
I mean.
There's a lot of gobbledygook.
And you're a lawyer.
But.
That's right.
Professional in that. But, you know, I just like the transmission place, you know, somebody says, oh, the transmission is going to cost you $3,000. The guy goes, all right, I'm leaving it there, and then the transmission guy fixes it and sells it. I think that's something that would be an accessory, I would think. And then, but putting up, we buy cars, that's a problem. I could see that. So there's stark, where's the middle ground on that?
So I'll throw this out here as a possible other way, other than establishing the number of cars. And that would be to clarify in the accessory, you could add the footnote that says accessory sales are for vehicles that were abandoned by their owner and are in default because of the, you know, you define what those are. It's somebody who's, you somehow did service on their car, and for whatever reason, the car is now sitting in your lot. So you would have to prove that you had somehow serviced the car. And that is then why it was for sale. I don't know if you could even write something about that, but that is the definition of an accessory use to an automotive service business.
And that's a good definition. The other thing that I've, talking to Brandon up there at the South Auto Repair Place, he fixes up cars, and, you know, he may have one car that he's fixing up, and then he sells it. And I don't know how that would figure in there. You know, if he's got like some slow time, okay, he's going to fix up the car so he can make some money and survive in the downturn. How can we fit that in?
Well, and that's it. And when I was thinking of what Laurie said, that could, that could be a business, and that undermines what we're trying to do here because it becomes, sale of the cars becomes integral to the primary purpose of the business, if that's the case. So I would think you could come up with a definition that talks about impounding cars for non-payment or abandoned cars, and limit it to that. But what I'm really hearing, I think, from the business owner is, I'd like to expand the allowable use to include selling cars because with the accessory use, it's uncertain and that kind of thing, and that's never been allowed in this zone. So what they're really arguing for is new zoning, and we've already decided, no, we don't want auto sales in these neighborhood business zones. So I think we've sort of answered the question. We could tinker with the definition of accessory use. I don't think it'd really change what's going on for that landowner. Again, there's multiple aspects to this staff proposal. There's value in the land because you're increasing density. There's more, there's some uses that weren't allowed before. There's some that are not allowed. It's a trade-off, but I don't think it's net punitive to the landowners from what I've heard.
Well, I'm not so interested, I mean, that's important, too, but running, having a business, an auto repair shop is more important to some people than putting up another, you know, 20 units on the property. I mean, we've got lots of density right now. Do we need any more?
Well, there could be both, actually. Mixed use is allowed, too.
Yeah.
But that's already, auto repair is already allowed. So that's not the issue. I'm inclined to leave this one alone. We could dig into it. Again, I think we'd at least need more research on how to define it, language, this kind of thing, but I'm not sure it's really helping our purpose for this rezone. We're kind of tinkering at the edges, and we've got sort of bigger issues to take on. If anyone wants to raise a motion, however.
But for right now, we got accessory sales are okay.
Yeah, so they can already do that. And not having a number is arguably just as helpful as having a number.
True. Are there any circumstances under which the city now would go to an existing accessory use and say that's too many, or that's excessive? And how does that, how does that work?
Well, that's exactly what happened in this case. The decision was that it was excessive, that it was no longer just accessory to the repair. So a code enforcement action is started, and the business is no longer permitted.
So there is a mechanism, in other words, because we're talking about impact, I think that's what we're all trying to find the balance, and what's too much impact for that use in that zone. So if you're saying that it already, there is a way of, I suppose, enforcing or policing that, then maybe I would agree with Doug that we would just muddy the waters, or somehow not do anything that would.
A chunk of time.
Yeah, to really explore.
On the margin.
On the margins, right, okay.
And arguably doesn't even help out. I mean, if I were a tenant operating an auto repair business and trying to sell, I'm not sure I'd want the number, because if I could show that my primary purpose was servicing the cars, I have some sense of what's going on. I have a better sense then, and the number might get in the way of the bigger picture, where I've got suddenly 15 cars that I've serviced and haven't been paid for, that I'm impounding and having to sell, and now I can't because the number's five. And they're actually hurt by the number. I just don't see it as a clear win for the effort that we would have to put into it.
Plus, we have to go back to what we're actually doing with the neighborhood business zone. We're trying to look at that description of those two neighborhood business zones, and one is a little different than the other, even though both have automotive service businesses. And that's what, that's why it's hard, is because we don't have a crystal ball to look into the future. All we have is what we have to work with right now. We don't, all we're doing is taking staff recommendations and discussing them, and perhaps making a recommendation to change it a different way. But I think it's pretty clear from our discussion tonight that we're not willing to create a new zone, a new type of zoning for either of those neighborhood business zones that would fundamentally fix that.
All right. No motion then, I think.
All right, I'm good.
All right. So, next step. Is there any other, I think, staff is looking then for any other questions or comments on the material that Laurie has presented to date before Arthur speaks to the issue of affordable housing? Is there anything else we want to take up?
I think we talked about the other, the height issues.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, I think we talked about the other height issue.
The height issue, yeah. I think that's pretty well settled. Is that it then? All right. Thank you. Your honor, Arthur.
You're patient, Arthur. Thank you.
No problem. Welcome back. Good evening. Good to see you all again. So as Laurie said, I think the purpose of tonight is to sort of give an overview of the concept of doing zoning, and I'm sort of just stalling a little bit while the screen comes down, and the PowerPoint shows up for the people in the audience. And I think the outcome of tonight is sort of to say, is there enough connection with this rezone that you want to sort of look at the more explicit details of a potential affordable housing provision? So tonight, we're not looking for the decision on, yeah, do it, or, all right, what are the details? It's like, yeah, okay, so then we would put together more detailed information. This is sort of to give you an overview to see if it seems like, in this circumstance, it's worth having that more detailed conversation. That's the main objective for tonight. So I'm going to try to give you an overview. The PowerPoint's now up for the audience. And I will start by reminding the group, last time I was with you, we were working on the housing strategy. And one of your Tier One strategies was to consider expanding bonuses or other density transfers, et cetera, with mixed use and multifamily. And one of the sub-bullets is reviewing, consider expanding density bonuses, including mandatory programs with increased development capacity in mixed use and multifamily zones. So that's sort of what triggered the question in the first place for this circumstance. The strategy is to say what you'll exactly do. It just says consider. So that's what we're here to do tonight, is to help you consider the question. So what I also want to do is sort of, what I find is that there's often sort of, a term is used. Sometimes the word inclusionary is used, but there really are, in my mind, very different ways in which linkages between affordability and land use changes occur. The first type, and there's four basic types. The first type is where you just have a provision that says, we don't, we haven't changed zoning, but if you provide some affordable units, we will give you some extra amount of units to help account for that. Kenmore has that. Newcastle has it. King County, Bellevue has that. And actually, you and Newcastle, the reasons you have that is, when you incorporated, King County had that provision, and your zoning code just sort of brought that in with you. The second scenario, or the next two scenarios, deal with rezones. And really, I've seen two different approaches used when rezones are occurring, typically in a defined area. Sometimes they're single sites, sometimes they're whole neighborhoods. The first is where you create like an overlay. You say, here's sort of what the old rules were, but you can go higher if you include some affordability. And actually, you have that. And Bellevue has that in the Belred area, and Samamish has that in their town center, and so does Issaquah in parts of their town center, and Mercer Island as well. The other approach with a rezone is you say, we've granted the rezone, and we're giving, you know, we're giving whatever that increase is, and you just have it automatically. But now we're going to say, you must do some affordable housing because we made that change. And examples of where that occurs is in Kirkland, Totem Lake in particular, downtown Redmond, Issaquah. You'll notice that Issaquah and Samamish have both, and that's because they created a zone where they did some increase where you have to do affordability, and then if you want even more, then you do it voluntarily. And then finally, there are situations in which some cities have just sort of made it mandatory and say, we might give you something for it, but everybody throughout the community is going to do affordable housing without, you know, in multiple different zones. Bellevue did that in the early 1990s in a number of California cities. So there are four different situations. Tonight's, if this conversation goes forward, we're looking at B or C would be the scenarios we would be looking at, or you would be looking at. Then I just wanted to point out that, as I mentioned previously, there are two situations now where the city of Kenmore does have provisions related to increased density with affordability. They are both quote voluntary at this part, at point in time. One is the citywide approach in which they have, again, inherited from the county, and it basically says that you will, if you're at moderate income, which is defined at 70% of median for rental and 80% for ownership, you would get a bonus unit for every affordable unit you provide. You also have, they have a provision to sort of double that bonus if it's a, what is called a lower income unit. So that's one you inherited from the older county code, and still is on the books. The TOD overlay, that is a different approach, and that's one in which you kept base density, but you created a very significant increase. And it's a very, very convoluted formula, I'll admit, but that's because the amount of increase that came with that was from a fairly small amount up to significant increases, like over 100 units to the acre versus current ones of like under 20. So we created a kind of complicated formulas because the main thing we were trying to do is cap the amount of affordability in the project at 10%, no matter what. But if you used a really big bonus, you would start having some of those units be more affordable. The basic formula was, for every three extra units you were granted, two would be market rate, one would be affordable. That's sort of, it's a little more complicated than that, but just to give you a general sense. So that applies in the TOD overlay district area. So then, now coming to this site, or these two areas that you're looking at with the NB zone. And so this is a chart, have they seen this particular form of the chart? This is a chart that you want to.
Well, I just might mention that we'll have copies of the PowerPoint for you. You obviously can't write this all.
Right, and everywhere down.
Right. But this, what, this is something that Laurie put together, and it basically is showing you the existing zoning at eight units per acre, how many units per each parcel in total for the sub-areas, 15 and 11 units under existing. You can go higher because you have that bonus program, but you have to do affordability or open space, or I think there's one or two other options to get that higher amount. So I think your base is essentially the eight units per acre. And then you're considering a couple of different maximums that are shown here. And you can see that the increase in the case of the NB zone is going from 15 units potentially, if you do the 36 unit per acre, up to 65. So that's an increase of 50 units, a pretty significant increase from the baseline. And then for the NB's South Zone, you'd be going from 11 to 34 units, and that's an increase of 23. So those numbers are highlighted, showing you sort of what the incremental increase could be. And that's just to give you a flavor of the increase that you're considering. So the starting point for looking at affordability programs is you're balancing two main questions, or two or three main questions. On the affordability side, the question is, what affordability level do you want to be at? You can see your current provisions have different affordability levels. In general, cities have been anywhere between 50 and 100% of median income is been, and it depends on how big the increases have been and different things, with it most commonly landing at 70 or 80% of median when there's one term used for affordability for rental and ownership. In recent years, we've been seeing some cities, based on economics and other issues, have actually set different affordability for rental versus ownership, and I'm going to show you why they maybe have done that. And in those cases, the affordability is usually at a slightly lower percent of median income when it's rental, and at a higher percent of median income when it's ownership. And then the other question, and the trade-off question is, if you want to be at a more affordable level, then you're going to get less units because you're sort of just doing an economic math equation, which I'm going to show you in a couple of minutes. So then, just as a reminder, and so you'll have this information, this is information you were looking at last year, but we have the current year data, is what is the income at different affordability levels? 80% of median is $53,000 to $76,000 a year. And we also, as I recall, when we worked with you before, you might want to think about the median incomes relative to the kind of jobs, and what kind of jobs that would maybe be able to target if you had different affordability levels. So for tonight, it's just to let you know, this is. So, for tonight, it's just to let you know, this is the kind of range, here are different jobs, the kind of ranges of pay for those jobs, just to give you some sense. That sometimes helps a city decide, oh, do I want to go 70 or 80%? It's worth getting fewer if I get, because it might help this income level. So this is just information we provide to help you if you move forward with this. And we would bring that back for further consideration by you. And then the other case is, how do you approach the amount of affordability? And there's basically two approaches that are used in rezone situations. One is, generally, if it's just a straight rezone, it just, you set a percentage of the total number of units, because you've, you've now allowed up to a certain amount. And most commonly, that seems to be, cities have settled around 10% of the units. A consideration in that is, and this is what you did in your downtown overlay, is, based on builders and developer input, when the bonuses were getting to be pretty significant, instead of increasing the, the amount of units from 10 to 20%, builders were sort of saying, we'd like to sort of have, limit the number of units that are restricted. So, the city set a system where you just made units more affordable, as the bonus got bigger. The other case is where you have, you set a base, and if they go above that base, some, you know, for every X number of units, then some number of those meet whatever your affordability goal is. So, anyway, those are the two approaches for terms of number of affordable units that have been used in cases of rezones. And then sometimes the city will say, here's our base, you know, 10% at 80% of median is what Redmond does. They say, if you want to give us units at a lower affordability level, then you can decrease the number of affordable units. Redmond does that, it's just one figure. Some have done a sliding scale, but there's also a way to build in some flexibility. So, that's sort of a quick background. Now, there's a lot of numbers here, but I'm just going to walk you through, there's really just two or three key numbers in this chart. And I just wanted to explain to you sort of how, when we're working with cities, we typically say, from an economic point of view, here's what's, what is going on. And so we have, we're trying to just show you here, and I have the pointer here that can maybe point to, is what we are typically doing, and is there a, does this mouse show up on this, it doesn't seem to show up when I'm going around? Is, we look at, is there any way that this can highlight this? It couldn't allow you, maybe this, here we go. I'm going to see if this helps and... Laser pointer, let's try that. Okay, here we go. So, what we do is, we look at, for different unit sizes, what are typical market rents? So that's what the top, top bar is saying, for a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom, and we have other columns, but I hit them, for studios and three-bedrooms. And what we're basically looking at is, what is a typical market rent? And we do that by looking at local data, and we've started that here. I wouldn't consider this definitive, but we have, Lori's helped out, and we've been looking, and we've helped Bothell earlier, or last year. And then, you then look at, all this is just showing you sort of some of the background assumptions. You then say, if at different affordability levels, and we've chosen two different affordability levels in each column, one is at 70% of median, and the other column is at 80% of median. We say, what is an affordable rent at 70% of median? And what is the affordable rent at 80% of median? And then we say, so what is the difference? How much are you asking a builder to reduce their rent if you're asking for affordability at any given level? Now, what we have in this last column is, we do an, a weighted average. We look at what typical building unit mixes are between studios, ones and two-bedrooms, and that gives us a weighted average. So in this example, what you're seeing is, is that the rent's being reduced by about 400, and I think that's $90, for a unit that is at 70% of median, and they're probably going to have to reduce their rent around 290, I think is the number there, if it's at 80% of median. We then use cap rates to then figure out, what is the capitalized value of that lost rent? And you can see the numbers, like 123 at 80, 70% of median, and 73,000 at 80% of median. That's the cost from a capitalized point of view. If they built it and then sold it, they would lose that much rent, and when they go to sell it, they would lose that much value at discount for each affordable unit. The trade-off, so that's sort of the math we do on what you ask for, and we can change it to whatever percent of median you want, and that will do the math for you, coming up with that. The bottom half is to say, what are you offering? And so here, we sort of, the main thing you're offering is land value. You're offering increased development capacity. And so you look at what is typical for the zoning that you're looking at, what are, what are the land transactions in the area recently for housing at, for, for raw land that's being developed, or for land that's being bought, at the type of unit type that you're looking at. And then you look at your, your ratio of how many, you know, your, your objective here is to create enough value between the land use, and maybe your city also has fee waivers, which, so I threw that in here. And, and what we're saying is, well, if you do a scenario where we're saying, for every affordable unit, we're going to give you three extra units, and that's a ratio of 4.0, you're creating about 144,000 in land value, 7,000, and so you're at about 147 is what you're offering. If you change your ratio of, the ratio between affordability and bonus and stuff, and the goal is, you're trying to get to a point where these numbers are comparing to one another. What it's costing the builder versus what you're offering. And typically, you're trying to also have that be in the black for the developer. And so that's the basic approach. And then, you do the same thing for ownership, all the same kind of thing, except there we look at the gap between an affordable sales price. And here we used 80 and 90% of median. And you can see the gaps end up being very similar, but I have to be 10% higher. And that's just, historically, that's how it works. The gap for ownership units at the same affordability level, a little bit higher. But it's the same exercise. Now here, we're assuming this is more, something more like a townhouse, maybe development if it went ownership and our stuff, but, you know, again, we'd have to do more research on this, but we use a slightly higher land value for ownership than we did for rental. And you go through the same math and, and exercise. So, what we see in your situation is, that first chart, you see a significant increase. And then what you see here is, that we're saying that probably somewhere in the ratio of two to four, depending on where you're at, would be the kind of ratio you would probably be looking at. So either of looking at that incremental increase and saying, we'd want a quarter of that, or a third of that to be affordable units, that's what you use this for. And then you could then look at your zoning and either say, we use a base approach, or we would look at this, what does that feel like as a total percentage of the overall developments that, based on your zoning, and might translate that to a percentage, okay? And we would do that math more explicitly, but I think what we saw when we ran this is, you have a fairly significant increase using either of these approaches. You could go into more detail, and then there's other questions that come up, that we would also come back for you to look at if you want to take it further. But this is just sort of the quick overview of the process and the exercise. And the question is, if you want to look at that in more detail in this case.
Scott, you remember studying for the bar exam, Dennis? The bar exam? We took these bar review courses, and they, they took like a year's worth of information on evidence, and they gave it to you in an hour. I think I just had that. And I understand housing pretty well, as a real estate lawyer, but I got about half of that. I don't know where you guys stand on this, but, and it's not a criticism? I think it's about the best you could do in the 15 minutes.
Right.
That you had to work with, but it's still, whoa, I'm swimming in numbers.
And that's why what we're trying to say is, we get that, we just wanted to see if we're in a ballpark that you want to have a more detailed conversation.
Right.
And that's, and that was the purpose of tonight. Right, so we get it.
Right, and I credit you for summarizing about as well as one could. A year's worth of numbers in 15 minutes.
I, I might just back up a little bit and, and explain why we're having this conversation, just to reinforce what Arthur said. Anytime you offer a rezone with an increase in density, it is an opportunity that you don't have again to talk about affordability. So that if you, if you approve an increase, but you don't ask for, or address affordability, you can't come back a year later and say, okay, now we want you to do some affordable housing. You can't do that. So that's why it's at the time of rezone that we look at this. And, and that's why we asked Arthur, given the small area, given the small number of potential units, does it make sense to have this conversation? And I think the conclusion was, well, there are enough units here that it probably does make sense. And then, doing a little bit of background work on the cost to the developer versus the value of the benefit we're giving, shows that, yeah, it actually could make economic sense. So, that's why the question is before you. And, and the question is, if, in fact, Arthur used the word intrigued, we've used that word before, if you're intrigued with the concept of perhaps incorporating some voluntary, mandatory, affordable housing requirements into this area, then we will come back with a proposal. If you're not intrigued, then that's sort of the end of the discussion.
And I like that you said that. That makes it easy.
Makes it easy.
Let's go with the intrigue test again. Are there any questions here on who's intrigued or not intrigued? Or comments?
Can I ask a question? If you're doing rentals, I, I get it, but if you're selling them, you know, they're going to be sold off, isn't that just a windfall for the person who is, you know, below the median?
So we are, in other cities who have done this, and, and your city as well, but I don't know if you've done ownership units, there are covenants on ownership units in ownership projects that have affordable, you know, and where the zoning was changed. We have, we have over 600 ownership units in East King County now that we help administer for cities that have long-term resale controls, because they were created through land use incentives like this.
So how do you set the, the sale price?
Right. So the original price is, if you go back to that chart, I'll see if I can get back, is there a way to get to the slides easier, rather than having to scroll through them all? I didn't want to have to scroll through them all, but it looks like I will. So, we would set the initial price based on, we have a formula that, that, spreadsheets that we've used for years that sort of set affordable pricing based on the income level. So that sets the initial price. And that's what they can be sold for. And then in the resale covenant, you take that price and you have an appreciation formula. And that's been an average of increase in real estate values and income in the region. And that's what most cities have used. So when you go to sell it, you look at how much those two indexes changed since you bought it, and that becomes the resale price. That's probably averaged about a four, four to five percent, it depends on how much real estate goes up. Incomes have gone up about 3% a year, and real estate values have gone up, depends on how far you go back.
Right.
So, so people are generally getting about a 4% appreciation on the home price, but it all depends on how those indexes move while they own it. And so then, when they go to sell it, there's a provision that we set the price, you know, based on the formula and the covenant. And then, for a period of time, they have to sell it to income-qualified buyers, and the covenant keeps rolling over.
Runs with the land.
Runs with the land, right. Or condo runs with the unit.
So, I'm intrigued, as we were last time, we kind of took this up. I will say that I'm uncomfortable with mandatory affordable housing requirements, partly because the people who currently own the land, they're, arguably, their land is devalued because the buyer then has to include a certain number of affordable units. So the land is suddenly worth less than it was before you imposed that requirement. Voluntary, I think, is a reasonable proposition. I will also say that simply increasing density increases affordability, because you've just increased the supply per square mile of housing in our city. So, it's still worth looking at affordability, but one of the reasons we proposed increasing density to begin with, was that in itself increases affordability. But I would strongly favor a voluntary affordability program, rather than a mandatory affordability program, because of the burden that mandatory puts on the existing landowners. One thing that kind of intrigues me too, is that, from the numbers here, which I think have to invoke, have to invoke a lot of assumptions here. How far back do you go for the cap rate? How far back do you go for the appreciation rate? So it's really, you can look at them, but it raises a lot of questions. But the, the bigger point is, it looks like it's a profit-making proposition for every developer here. You're getting more because of the increase in density you get, you're getting more money out of the requirement, or the, the choice to add affordable units or to comply with this program. Which makes me think, well, every developer would do this then. There's, there's a lot of profit to be made here, but I'm not sure that's how the market's playing out. How many affordable, you know, when, when developers have a choice, how many opt into this kind of a program? How many have done that in Kenmore with the existing affordability incentives that we have?
And, well, that's hard to say, because there hasn't been development of any sort, with or without the increases in the center. They did do it across the street where they had a requirement.
Right.
I would point out, in general, you're right, voluntary programs often aren't used, but sometimes they are. Bellevue has one where in Belred, they are using it. And then the mandatory program, and I think the point I would make is, this approach you've seen laid out here, this is a chart I started using the day I came from the development side to come work for the public side. And I've been using this chart in various forms, and in every one of those examples we gave you, the same approach was used, the same kind of cap rate approach was used. And what we are seeing is, in the mandatory situations, and I think probably the best evidence is Semamish, but in every mandatory situation, we are getting development done. It didn't kill development. And in the cases of, Semamish did an interesting approach, is, and we use the same formulas for the mandatory and the, they did a, they did an increase from one level to level A, where they say, and you must do 10% affordable. And then they said, now, if you want to go above this tier, we have units on the sideline for the whole neighborhood, you can buy those if a certain percentage of those are affordable. Three developers have opted to not only do the mandatory, but they've also, since they started having some, they've agreed to do, ooh, I just got a dry throat, they agreed to also do some of the voluntary. Use the same math in both situations. So, this approach, yes, you're right, you can question the assumptions that have gone into it, but it is on an approach that have been used. Thank you. And she's, she's already working on it for me. Thank you. So, yes, you can challenge the assumptions, and I get that completely, but we have been using...
Just don't quite follow it.
Hmm?
You know, here's, these, here are these various programs for affordability. The voluntary ones aren't very popular. Then, but they look like they're profitable. You're going to make more with the density increase than you lose in the reduced cost per unit, because they have a cap on how much you can rent it for or sell it for. Then it seems to me, the voluntary should be exploding with, with demand from developers. But if they're not, then that, that's another reason for me to question the assumption.
And what, my point being is that, in a rezon, the rezone situations, which is what we're really, where they're significant, versus the, I get a couple of units more, which is what most of the voluntary ones are, it's just, oh, if you do a few more units, you'll get a few more. These are rezones where you're really significantly increasing the capacity. And most of the cities have gone with a mandatory approach there. But the couple places where they've had voluntary, i.e. Belred and/or Semamish, they've still also used it. But what you have to do, based on what Lori's comment is, is, if you want to keep it voluntary, you guys say, well, the zoning says you can go up to what, your number that we had, but you don't get to get there unless you give us some affordability. And so some cities have said, let's, that gets kind of complicated, let's just make it, here is the height. And so that's, Redmond decided, let's just go to the height. Kirkland used it for a while, and Totem Lake had the, let's do the incremental. And then about five, I don't know, probably six years ago, they switched it over and said, let's just get, here is the height, and just make it mandatory. And there are builders who are doing it. So, it's a stylistic approach to some extent, but the point I think that Lori's making, which is the question in the front of you, is, either way, either the voluntary approach or the, the more, what feels like the more, quote, mandatory.
Called mandatory.
Then, how do you, yeah, how do you, you know, explore it more? You would get materials in advance, so you can see the numbers, have a chance to look at them more carefully in advance. We also have a few other questions that would go with it, where we'd look at your, some of the more administrative things, which... your, some of the more administrative things, which are already being done for the overlay. We present sort of the full package, so that you can weigh and judge what makes sense. And in the end, you might look at it and say, thanks, but no thanks. The question now is, do you want to go through that conversation?
Yeah, and it's eight fifty-five, so that's really all we can decide in the next five minutes anyway. So I'm okay with it.
I think it would be very beneficial for us to go through that process.
Who else?
I agree with it. What about expediting permits to get them to accommodate?
That's, that's something you could look at, and council would have to decide, and, you know, the city would look through their system to see if they thought they could accommodate and decide if they wanted. But some cities have those type of provisions.
Didn't we have that among our top-tier proposals for affordability?
I think we talked about it.
Streamlining the permitting process.
We'll double check.
I can't remember.
Yeah, we should probably review that, what we-
What we made the decision.
Well, it's coming back anyway, isn't it? It's on our docket. So, anybody object to the intrigue threshold? Anybody not intrigued?
No, I-
Three intrigued, two no comments.
Yeah, I'm intrigued. I just wonder how or whether this relates at all to our upcoming look at affordable housing and existing, I know we're supposed to focus, I think, on existing housing. There is no, or is there any connection between this and what we're supposed to do with our next docket?
Right. So I think I can respond to that. So again, the issue here is that if you were thinking about a density increase, and you were thinking about the benefit that we're giving, and whether in exchange for that, there should be an affordable housing approach, then we would do it with this zoning project. The alternative, which may not be as easy, would be not to touch the density in the neighborhood business zone at this point, and then do a more holistic look of the notion of density increases, kind of a citywide approach. I mean, that's the only other alternative. If we don't look at the issue now, and you're intrigued by it, if we do the increase and then come back, and if we don't do the increase, we've lost the opportunity, if you don't consider it now if we do the increase.
We've lost it within these zones.
Correct.
But it seems to me we could do both. We could focus on adding an affordability option or requirement for these zones, and then we could look at a broader city-wide affordability.
Correct. Absolutely.
So I think we'd look at it.
I think we need to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
There's your direction.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Anything else? I'm sorry?
So-
Relief pitchers.
Now that you've decided you want to take a look at it, your first meeting in July is July 4th. We won't be here. So-
What?
What? So the question is, whether you want to consider holding, we were really trying to get to that July 18th date for a public hearing.
Right.
If you would like to revisit this topic on July 11th, which is the next Tuesday, we could do that. We would advertise the hearing before you'd made a recommendation on the affordability issue, but we would still hold the public hearing on the 18th. And then certainly after the public hearing, then you have to decide what your final recommendation is going to be. But we could still potentially meet our timeline, if you met on the 11th, to discuss this topic. We held the hearing on the 18th, and then came back to you for the final.
I'm okay with that. I just, you know, this is such a big topic. Look at these numbers and the whole bit. I mean, we could make maybe a superficial review of it on the 11th, but I don't think we can get, you know, the whole thing digested.
It would be the only thing on the agenda, I will say that.
Right. I think it's worth a shot. If we don't, we don't. I guess then we have a public hearing in August or something, if we can't pull it off.
Well, if she advertises the public hearing, though, it would, it would go out, and we'd have it, right?
You would.
But we wouldn't be making a decision about, even about the affordable housing recommendations until after.
Right.
But that piece would be included.
But we would have analyzed it on the 11th.
Right. If your recommendation was incomplete, then you might have to think about, well, if we advertise it for the 18th, and we have it on the 18th, and we don't have a direction in mind, the public hasn't really had an opportunity to comment on it. So you might end up holding a second public hearing if you needed to do that.
Can you strike a public hearing, if you note it for the 18th, and then we decide we don't have enough?
We tend not to do that, just because people kind of are expecting it, and then it's not a good situation to tell folks, come down and talk, and then not speak to that.
Second public hearings. I think we can at least, it's worth a shot to go with this. All right.
All right. So we will advertise the public hearing for the 18th. Do we have a quorum on the 11th? Are you all available?
I'm available.
I think I am.
I can be here if you want.
Okay. All right. So I see four head nodding for the 11th.
I'm, I, something came up on the 11th, and I think it's during the day, and I'm presuming it is, so.
We've got two others.
Right. So we would have a quorum with the four of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
But I can't guarantee it, because I don't, it just came up today, and I can't forget.
There's four here, right? Are you available?
Dennis is good for the 11th.
So we have four on the 11th, and you can let us know, Scott, and we'll let Mike and the two Mikes know about the 11th. And we'll advertise the public hearing for the 18th.
All right.
Does that sound okay?
Does that satisfy this element of the agenda?
Yes.
Let's see here. Getting my agenda back out. All right, that satisfies the final item on the agenda. Is there any discussion of new business or comments? None? All right. There being none, I hereby adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.